All right, I'd like to call to order the Radcliffe City Council's special called meeting for September 8th, 2025 at 5:00 PM at Radcliffe City Hall. I'll be in street live on Facebook if you can rise for an invocation and can remain standing for a pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our abundant blessings. We thank you for the wonderful weather outside. Father, we ask that you give the mayor and the city council the wisdom and guidance to lead this meeting and lead this city into the future. Father, we ask that you bless our city attorney, all of our citizens, and we ask that you bless our service members both here and abroad. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Bell?
Present.
Brown?
Here.
Deroch?
Here.
Merle?
Here.
Owens?
Present.
Thompson?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum for new business. This is a second reading of an ordinance amending the city Radcliffe employee strength table. Mr. Pike.
This is the ordinance amending the city Radcliffe, Kentucky, classification and compensation pay plan section employee strength table. Whereas the city council of Radcliffe, Kentucky adopted an ordinance establishing the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, classification and compensation pay plan on the first day of July 2001. And whereas the city council's desires to amend that ordinance under the section entitled Employee Strength Table as follows, be it ordained by the city council of Radcliffe, Kentucky, as follows. The employee strength table is amended by adding and amending the table attached here to. The remainder of the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, classification and compensation pay plan shall remain the same. On the strength table, under Fire Department, Captain, firefighter, authorized strength one is amended, excuse me, amended from one to two, and funded strength is amended from one to two. And then administrative assistant to the chief, one and two. Under funded strength is amended from one to read zero. And...
Is that still it, Mayor?
Yeah, I think that was it.
Okay. That's a typo? Yeah, okay.
That was the department. I think we did that.
Gotcha, okay. That's the second reading, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion second, any discussion? This will be adding the captain, an additional captain to the fire department. So with that, we have roll call vote, please.
Bell?
Present.
Yes. Brown?
Yes.
Deroch?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Next is a motion going to care, closed session per carer S. 618101B, acquisition, sale of real property, acquisition or sale of real property, and G economic development.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, Tim, if you want to...
We'll let y'all stay in here.
Okay, I'd like to call back to order the, do I have a motion to go back into special called meeting?
Motion second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let it be known that no official action or vote was taken while in closed session, and at this point, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We will go into our work session. Ashley, is Facebook back up? Is it back up, Tim? Make sure before I start here, make sure the screen's back on. Check your video, it's still showing the...
There we go.
It's back up. All right, that's on now. Good, thank you, Tim. All right. Yeah, gotcha. All right, I've got about three items for discussion in the work session. We'll start with number one, that's going to be the property tax rate 2025. Usually, Mr. Fox is here, but Mr. Fox had a place to be this weekend. He'll be back tomorrow, so between Ashley, myself, and Mr. Pike, we're hoping that we can explain this to you pretty good. Y'all should have had an opportunity to look over that. The rate, looks like the real property rate is at .126. The personal property's at .170, and the bank deposit's .0025, 00025. Now, that is on 100... Mr. Pike, go ahead.
That's the compensating rate per $100 of assessment. It's the .126. So that basically is the compensating rate gets you roughly the same amount of money that you got last year on your land taxes. Now, by law, you can adopt that same rate. You can increase it 4%, which would go to .131 per 100. Or you can do anything in between, staying the same, and a 4% increase. You could also lower the rate, but that's silly.
Usually not.
Yeah, I mean, usually you don't, you're not supposed to go below the compensating rate.
Now, y'all should have a copy of the list that gives you the history that goes through last year. Let me see here.
And you could keep it the same as last year, which was .129, so that is less than the 4%. It would still trigger a public hearing, but the thing about 4% is if you go above 4%, it triggers a potential referendum by the taxpayers. So that's not something we get into. We want to avoid that at all costs. So now, if you look historically, you see, you know, in the early 1990s, good night, the rate was 17.4, and it's come down, it's come down dramatically. And if you took 129, or even took the 4%, 131, that would be the second lowest rate historically. So the rates are just, they're very low historically based on the great amount of real estate appreciation we've had, right, over the past several years. Land prices have just skyrocketed, as we all know, and it's good in one way and bad in another way, right, depending on your perspective.
And I know Chance, I don't have it in front of me, because, and I don't know if he even has it yet, but the new assessment of our community as a whole, when they do that, he usually has that number. I'm trying to remember what last year's was, but if you go back, and I was just looking back from '06, kind of when I came in, and you go back and look, you can kind of see we were .162, and if you come back to today, it's .129, which is last year's rate. And so, we can see from 11 through, looks like nearly 17, we kept the point, we didn't look like it took any increase, or the rate stayed pretty much consistent.
And you can see in Chance's memo that taxable real property assessments are only up 73.8 million from last year. Two years ago, they were up 249.6 million. So still a very large increase, just not the historical massive increase that you had a couple of years ago, so...
That's what I was looking for, I've been having in my packet. No, I was looking for the packet, that's actually what I was looking for when Mr. Pike just read.
So just to kind of give some reference, I did some calculating. At a home at $300,000, which is not a huge home these days, we're talking about taxes at the current rate would be about $387 for the year. If you took it to the .131, would be a $6 increase for the year, less than going to McDonald's. So, I mean, if you put it in that kind of perspective, we face continuing rising costs and salaries year after year, and we have to do that to keep pace and keep good employees in place. We don't have a lot of wiggle room for increasing taxes anywhere else. We've talked about the restaurant tax time and again, and that's not anywhere on the horizon. So for us, at least, that I'm aware of, so just some things to think about. If we say we're increasing, what is it really? I mean, if we say we're going to increase a dollar, it's still an increase, but isn't that much of an impact? So I think we have to put it into perspective. So I want to step further, and I thought, okay, what if we have a $500,000 house that we're talking about? At the .129, it's $645 for the year. At .131, it's $655, so a difference of $10 on a $500,000 home. If you can afford a $500,000 home, can you afford $10 more a year? So just putting it in perspective.
And I want to try to make sure that, for my sake, I think I understand it, but for the public, because I know last year, we went through this again, and last year, we took the 4%, which was the 1, .129, which was the lowest it's ever been. Even taking the 4%, .129 is the lowest this has ever been. So if I'm understanding what you're saying, for everyone to try to grasp this, as Pam was trying to say, our options, .126 is what it, what is what it's calculated at, computed at today, .126. We can stay the same at .129, or we can take it to the 4% rate and go to .131. To Pam's point, every dollar to every person is a dollar. It's a lot. We're not trying to increase anyone's monthly expenses. To Mr. Pike's point, this is what I want to try to hopefully make a little more clear. In reading this last year, the assessment was based on 73,855. This year, last year was 249, so that assessment keeps going down. So I think what you were saying last year is if that keeps going down, at some point, we're going to lose money if we, if we don't take the 4%. And see, that already went down $175,802. Am I saying that correctly?
The 73 is...
What Chance said is taxable assessments are up only 73.8 million, so that's not the total value of real estate.
So it's, but last, but last year was, last year was up 249,000.
Up an increase of 240, not total of real estate value. The real estate value is much greater than that.
Right.
But the, in other words, the increase two years ago was very high, and this year's increase quite a bit lower, but it's still greater than last year, greater than years before. It's greater than it's ever been, real estate assessments overall.
That's what the rate...
Okay, that's what keeps our rate lower.
Correct.
Okay.
When your, when your real estate depreciates, your tax rate then will have to go up to compensate for that.
So good rate, rate goes down.
Right, it's not our problem. Okay, so, but the 4%, you're saying is when we, I'm not saying we're going to do that, but if we don't do that, what do you mean by we missed the opportunity to ever get that again?
Because of the compensating rate, which is the rate of taxation required to get you to basically that same amount of real estate tax that you took in last year. If you, if you don't take that 4%, that compensating rate for last year affects this year. The compensating amount is calculated. So in other words, the compensating rate is, to get last year's tax proceeds in this year, how much do we need? Right? And so that's why the compensating rate, every year, you're given that compensating rate by the county and by Chance, to tell you, how much money do we have to have basically to break even with last year? And it's adjusted a little bit, but that's roughly what it is. So if you don't take that 4%, if you don't take that extra bump, then the next year, it's based on you not taking the bump, right? That's why I say you lose it. Because, because next year's rate will be based on what you take this year. So if you don't take the 4% this year, it's gone. Because next year, you're bound by the 4% overcompensating.
You got a different rate next year, and then you can take, but that rate that's already set is gone. So for instance, this year's, like, for instance, that's what we were discussing, this year's budget doesn't have any, any of the computed or compensating potential increases that could come in. We base it on what we took in last year for, for what we budget for. So any additional dollars that comes in, whether we take it at the .16, .26, which generates about $50,511 based on Chance's estimate, would be an additional to the budget. If you take the adopted 4% rate at .131, then the city could generate an additional $125,000 over what we took in last year.
And that generation is revenue, for people may not understand, because when we talk about it, they only hear tax increase, but they may not understand what the tax increase is, even though as we gave you the examples of maybe a $300,000 house and a $400,000 house, and it may be the difference between $6 total for the year difference, or 10, people will say, well, what does that mean to me? Well, it's us trying to generate revenue. We have only four or five sources of revenue streams, and this is one of them through property taxes. So you're right, it's timing. If you don't do it now for next year, then we have to wait the following year. So it's almost every two years, we're looking at, how do we squeeze a few more cents out of your taxes, your property taxes per hundred, to make sure we can make the money that we need in our till to cover whatever? But again, most people don't hear that or understand it. They just think, oh, we're taxing them, and that's the negativity. But I think the more we try to clear it up, and say, what's the difference? What's the difference mean in that regard?
A raise is a raise.
Right.
No matter if it's 50 cents or a dollar or $2. When the customer, I mean, when the citizen hears that taxes go up...
This is where they only hear taxes, right.
Yeah, so they can hear you, there you go.
No matter what explanation we all have about the raise, the raise is a raise, my opinion. I hear something went up, I'm immediately inquiring why, how much, and when it starts.
Right. And that's what we're talking about.
We have our reasons, and the consumer has their reasons.
Right.
How to make it less painful, we just have to discuss and educate.
Which is what we're doing, it's all about awareness and education, right? So they don't come up with the wrong...
Because everything goes up, and they're already struggling.
Everyone's got to remember, it goes up for us too. So we're not just raising their tax rate, we're raising ours.
Yeah, you're right, but I'm talking about how people will take that, how in favor there will be that last year it went down, and now it will go up.
And it's not just, I want to make sure, because we do get that a lot, but it's not just residential, this is commercial as well, so...
Everybody, everybody was celebrating that last year.
Properties is tangible.
So it's basically the, and I know, like I said, I know Chance is not here, but he's going to want to kind of know a consensus, because we've got to write the ordinance up for this to get the vote, because obviously October is our tax month for real property and the other, the other tax papers that we have to send out. So really, kind of would like to get a direction of what the council's thinking on this, and the, and I can like mention it again, obviously, usually the personal property and the bank tax, usually that's not a, we don't really get a whole much of that, usually stays pretty straightforward, but it's really going to be the real property. So a computed rate, .126. Last year's computed rate was at .29.
Yes.
And we did take that 4% allowance last year, which was .123. So just as a, like to see kind of what you all are thinking when it comes to, do you want to look at the floor? Do you want to leave it? I mean, it's open for discussion.
That isn't fact. I don't understand that, but they won't understand. It's like we said, to them, it's a raise. We can do nothing and let it ride.
Have to at least stay the same.
And again, I'll, I'll mention, I'll obviously mention the amounts, just so you all have the amounts in front of you, should be the third paragraph down. It's the generated adopted, if you take the computed rate, or compensating rate, it's computed, .126, it's about 50,000. If you take the 4% adopted rate at .131, it would generate additional 125,000 over what we took in last year. And that's kind of what Mr. Pike was talking about. If you don't take it last year, you lose it, and then you generate the additional.
And I just remember Mr. Pike explaining that last year, which is why I was, I'm hoping I'm not, I'm not causing any more confusion. Anytime you're talking money and raising, or the appearance of raising, or actually raising, it is a touchy subject, which is one of the hard decisions that we have to make. So I know he explained it last year, he's explaining it again this year. I don't really like to lose an opportunity of revenue, and which is kind of what Ms. Owens is saying. To your point, we can, we got three options. We stay, we lower to .1, .26, we stay the same.
You wouldn't lower it, that, that is, that is the computed rate, yes.
That's the compensating rate, I'm sorry, at the computed rate.
You can take the computed rate.
We can take the computed rate.
You can match last year's at .29, if you choose.
Or we can go to the 4%.
Or you take the .131.
Or the 131.
That's kind of your just areas of choice.
Mm-hmm. So you're going to go down the line and ask everybody?
So, well...
So what are we doing?
Well, I just want to, you know, I'll make sure everybody gets out their comments, because it's always a touchy subject, especially when it comes to this.
It is.
The, and the tax rate, if you'll read that first line, you can see was computed based on the .126 of assessment. The rate would be adopted will be lower than the rate last year. So that tells you by lowering it, you're, you have that option, if you, if you take the adopted rate as computed.
Sir, is there any way to identify that money, say, last year, so the year before, that revenue, do we, if someone says, what do you use the money for?
Well, we don't, yeah, we don't earmark, and that's why, that's why I tell you that it's not currently in the budget as operational funds, this is additional. Now, we have things, the police department last year had air units go down, we had extra cost. I mean, we always have extra costs, as y'all know, we have two air units that's down at Calvin. There's always cost associated, we still have healthcare, you know, coming up. So there's always associated costs that come up throughout the year that aren't typically budgeted.
Budgeted.
Budgeted, yeah.
So it's a kitty contingency.
But it would, it would go in the general fund as dollars used to offset.
Sure.
So I...
We're talking about like $6 to $10 per year, right?
Excuse me?
Depending on the house.
Well, I look at it too from the commercial standpoint. You get, we have, you know, properties here, they're multimillion dollar properties. It's going to be different for those business owners. It's not just going to be $6 or $10, it'll be much more for those.
Just so the public doesn't think I'm trying to confuse things, let me ask you a question, I'm looking at the form that we got, and it said, last year, we took the 4% at .123. Is that a typo? Because this is where I'm getting confused.
No, the 1.23 came, that's what the computed rate was, the rate that you took was .129.
So we took the 1...
He's just showing that's what, that's what the rate was when it came in.
Okay.
We took, and that's what it says, took the 4% of computed rate at .123.
Okay, so when he said took the 4% at, it makes it look like we took it at .123.
But if you look at the adopted tax rate and go down...
1.129.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's what I was getting confused, because I'm like, if we took it at that...
Chance is a confusing person.
How are we, okay.
Chance is, he's confusing himself.
Public, I hope I haven't confused you, but if, what I'm looking at was a little confusing, but thank you.
Yeah, and you know, I don't mind y'all taking a few minutes to decide kind of what you consensusalize, what you all may like, because it's a decision, it affects the bottom end for people, and as some of y'all stated, anytime you talk about an increase of any kind, as Ms. Bell said, you know, it perks people's ears up, so you got to make sure that you're making the right decision. I've been in your all shoes several times, and I understand completely decisions that have to be made when it comes to this stuff.
So I went ahead and took that out to $3 million, since you're talking about businesses affected by that.
Yeah, how much it affects.
That's about a $60 difference from .129 to the 1, .131.
Yeah.
So a $60 is not a $60. A year. A $60 is an additional to what a person or a business already pays plus $60. So if he pays 389, it's going to be now plus $6, it's going to be 420, 425. That's how I see it.
On 3 million, you're, look, they're already paying $3,870 in taxes on .129, so that would take them to 3, what did I say, 3,930.
And that's what I mean. I don't see it as a $60, I see it as the additional 60 on the already amount that people, businesses and individuals, homeowners are paying. So if they're paying 192 plus $6, it would be 206. It's not going to be 192 anymore. If it's 295, it's going to be, to be 350. That's what they see. You have to write a check with 352, when you go writing 269, that's all. We interpret it this way, and it's a good way. I'm not denying it, but we have to consider, the inflation, we have to consider, everything else, the food goes up, and plus this goes up, we just have to be very, very, very decisively.
Yeah, but we also have to balance expectation too of growth, because this is part of that econ, when people think economic development, it's like, how do you pay for these things that people think they want, or legitimately want, and we may have a few dollars in our coffre that's generated by this type of revenue stream? But when we can't, when we can't do that and keep up with what people want, on the other scenario, when people say, hey, we live in Radcliffe and we don't have A, B, and C, and we're not talking about businesses coming in, we're just talking about the upkeep of maybe infrastructure, or something that we want to do at Calvin Community Center, like put a top on it. And if we don't have the money for those things, because that falls under, you know, your quality of life and your well-being, we can't talk one and talk, and argue, you know, we're, we're just sort of pivoting on our feet constantly, because we don't have, we can't just dig into the numbers in the Walmart parking lot and say, hey, this is why we did what we did. But we do get stopped in public going, why don't we have this, and why don't we have that? And when we try to talk about brass tacks and dollars, this is what we're talking about in brass tacks and dollars. And it is hard to manage a city when someone says, I want a sidewalk. Well, where's that coming from? Well, we, we need a playground. Where's that coming from? Because we're selling services, and this is how we get our revenue. We're not selling t-shirts and shoes. We don't have that tangible asset to make money from. So our money stream for any city, and we're talking, you know, rural city here, it gets hard to determine, do we get more money so we can do the things to make our fire department be okay in their building, because we don't have it in our, we didn't put it in our budget? This is what you call the kitty, it's a contingency. So it's, at some point in time, it is, it is hard. It is hard.
Calvin Center needs air conditioning, that wasn't something that was in the budget.
So, but when people go to use that center, and they're thinking, hey, it's, we're sweating bullets in here, why don't we have this, and why don't we have this? And I come over here all the time, and it should be, you know, below zero. How do you manage that expectation without the funds behind it? You're going to have an argument one way or the other, it's just being smart about your response and saying why we do what we do, versus say, well, we just raised money, and I don't know where it went.
She's telling me that.
No, I'm just talking to you, though, because you're going to be out in the street, and people are going to ask you that, and you have to be able to be articulate.
I deal with that every day, Mr. Terry.
I know, and this is one of the things.
Same thing that you want to put the heat in the Calvin Community Center, the same thing a father is trying to put food on the table for the kids.
Food, you're right. So the question is, what do you do?
Being there every day.
Air conditioning and food. Just whatever you decide, you got to stand behind it.
Did y'all read that last paragraph that Chance put on there? That is the summary on the homestead and disability exemptions. Of course, just so y'all see that, and then that is shown on the paper. That's what the secondary paper is, and it shows, it looks like, homestead exemptions, assessments is about 92 million, and it looks like the dollars on that was about 120, 44, 144. Just, just so y'all see that.
And that's home exemption, sir, when there was 65?
Is it 65 or 66?
65. 65.
It's amazing how much that keeps going.
Exactly.
Which means we're not getting money on that, on those exemptions.
Yeah, it shows you, well, it shows you the difference lost, that...
Because it doesn't apply to that many.
Last year, we gained, we lost...
Gained 14.
14 over the previous year, but you still lost 120, because the assessments went up. So getting to, and kind of go down, like I said, not a vote, but more or less a consensus, just because we have to write something up, so we kind of know a direction to go, so the question that I... point one two six, leaving the rate, computed rate, uh, compensating rate, uh, adopting and something in the middle, which could be the point one two nine, which was what last year's was, or consider do the point one three one? Now, the only thing I do not, I don't have the answers, and probably could've checked before I come in. I, I know the county, I think, took four percent. Um, I'm not sure about school tax, and I can look at my news.
School tax, I think, stayed the same.
Do you know, stayed the same?
They, they stayed the same. They did not take the four percent.
'Cause obviously, if their assessment goes up, and the school, I don't know if, like I said, school tax, but our, our bill is separate of the Harden County tax. Um, but if anything, when they receive that and their assessment goes up, of course, their bill will go up, and they see that, and that's an automatic, um, sign. I'm just, you know, just in general, as people look at their, um, tax roll when they get it. Or you can take the adopted rate at one, or point one three one. So that's kind of what I'm looking for from the council members, so we can kind of have a direction for next meeting.
Okay.
Ms. Bell, I'll let you start.
I just thought of missing.
You wanna start? Oh, okay, hell, go, let's go to.
It's one of the other four points, mine. Why take everything we can? I mean, why raise it as high as we can?
So you got Kim, okay, thank you. Ms. Bell? I'm gonna go this way, I'll go like this.
So it, it is what it is. It is in the middle, and then it is the four.
You're gonna take the comp, the computed compensating, you can take the middle, or what last year was, was point one two nine, or you, we can do a four percent, but that requires the public hearing, and that's a point one three one.
Well, I don't want the Colvin Community Center to go without air condition. I go middle.
Okay. So that's last year's rate.
Thank you.
Ms. Owens?
I'll take the middle rule, sir.
Mr. Brown?
I'll go with the, uh, lower compensating rate of point one two six. After speaking with, uh, our finance officer, we only have a, a couple of large acquisitions, uh, two fire trucks, both of which have been paid for in full, um, plus we have around ten million in reserves. So, our financial ability seems to be in stable shape. Um, we're also making interest on the money that we've already spent for the fire trucks that we, that haven't been delivered yet. So we're making money on, um, the fact that we've already paid for that, and we haven't used it yet. Um, if there were a dire emergency, I could understand asking for more money from our citizens, but I don't see it. I think, I think we just need to be smarter in the, in the way that we're using our money. I saw an ad in the News Enterprise a couple of weeks ago where West Point had partnered with LG&E to present a party on the river. I'm somebody who loves to knock on doors and establish connections. I would be going to every Fortune five hundred company in a three to five hundred mile radius, and I would knock on the doors, and I would present Radcliffe as the most desirable place in Kentucky and the surrounding area to locate a factory, a company, a facility, um, a hu, an, an org, an organization. We have everything here. We have the smartest people. We have infrastructure. We have access to airports, UPS, all the other, a river. We have so much to offer, and yet, we're not getting ourselves out there as we might be. There's places in Indianapolis, Nashville, Knoxville. We could be bringing them here. We, we could get people locating here. We just, we just need to show them what we have.
Until we show them what we got.
All right.
I'm good with the staying the same at the point one two nine.
One two nine.
I'm good with the one point two, or point one two nine. The, how did we pay for those fire trucks? Was that?
That's back from COVID.
That was COVID money, that was in our budget.
So if we had another situation where we had to buy a large ticket item, then we're back to struggling. I mean, we do have the reserves, yes, granted, but you don't wanna deplete those reserves in case of emergency situation. So.
When I came in, I think it was twenty, what'd I get in, twenty-eleven, we had about one point, it's either one point two or one point eight, so. And it takes a long time when you spend a lot of money, like we do, that, that we have to function.
I mean, these fire trucks were how much one point?
Three and a half.
Three seventy-one.
And we'll continue to go up.
To your point, next year, we don't have any COVID money left. We are back to our sixteen point seven.
Well, ours was gone last year, twenty-four.
So for the coming bu, the budget.
No, that, we haven't spent COVID money. The only thing left that we held was the fire trucks. Everything else has been
Right, so we didn't even incorporate that.
To what we had to use it for.
This year, we incorporated that, the carryover. The next year, we don't have anything.
Well, it's whenever, yeah, whenever that's paid out. Technically, on paper, it's there, but it's.
We don't have any, anything else.
Any other income.
Well, you have in, I won't say it that way.
Any other income, right. We don't have an additional income from another revenue source. No federal, no COVID money, no, no money like that.
All right, so we're gonna write that up as a motion for point, uh, point one two nine, uh, which will be equal to what the city took in last year, uh, or the rate that the city took last year. And then we'll make that the document that we'll present to the council. And if there's any change or no vote, I mean, that's up to you guys, but that's, that'll give Chance the opportunity to write the ordinance and give it to Ashley, so she can do what she needs to do. So, all right. Declaration of surplus. Thank you all for that discussion. Declaration of surplus, y'all should have a list. Is this our typical fall when we start surplus and items? Um, you all have all the lists of what's been presented to the, to us in the office through all the departments. Um, if there's any questions on that, you can, um, uh, just let us know, but it's just a lot there. I just don't think y'all have time to go through it all, and it'd be just a motion to, and typically, most of the stuff, when we get rid of it, it's, it's ready to, it's ready to, it's ready to be go.
Is this on the website? Can, can citizens look at this and see what's available?
We typically, uh, Mr. Brown, what we do is, uh, we hire a, um, auctioneer. It's usually a local auctioneer. They take it, they categorize it, photograph it, and then put it on their website, which we can share. So, okay, yeah. And then some of the larger ticket items, we put on GovDeals, if there is some, that we can try to get more money out of. Uh, most of this stuff here, though, is just gonna be stuff that's kind of grouped together, boxed and sold off. And then the last thing on the agenda is the cabins at Saunders Springs. Uh, I had asked you all previously if you all had been out there to take a look at the one that's in dire need of work.
Yeah.
So, uh, that, Ms. Becky was supposed to be here, but unfortunately, she couldn't, um, she's not here for this discussion, but I have got to, you know, either move forward with a, um, figuring out, we do not have that budgeted for repair. I've got estimates on what it could potentially cost. I'm waiting on a couple more estimates. Uh, there's been several people go by and just see it's taped off. That, that is due to some, some rotting wood, some, uh, Tim, I don't know what's the word I'm looking for. The gentleman that had it before, when Tim was in, this goes back to your, when Tim was kinda in the middle of transitioning out, did some work on it. Um, some of the boards were more rotten than what he anticipated. And so when, they call it chinking, which goes, that's the mortar between the, the, the wood, um, was a little worse. There was, the, the way the eve was built, it was forcing water back into the wall, which caused more of that to rot. I'm not a structural engineer by any means, but I think the best way to have done that, and rather than jack it up, would've been probably tore the whole top of it off, and then broke it down like a Lego, so, you know, you start, take everything off, and then build it back up. They tried to do it the other way, and it didn't, it didn't work, 'cause they didn't realize how rotten the wood actually was as they took those pieces out. So, that'll be coming up at some point, but we, we really need to get this done before winter. And so, uh, we've reached out to several places. She's, um, Becky's also reached out to, uh, places that have historic places in Barge Town to try to get those guys to potentially look. It's a little bit harder than it looks to get people to actually come out and work. They'd say it that way, but that's just, there's just not people clamming to get in here to do this work. So I will let you all know, uh, it's, I'm hoping that we can get the bids in, uh, before something, you know, takes that off. But if you, if people are watching this, or if you wanna go up Greg and do a story to let people know, it's, it's not that we're just not doing anything to fix it. It's just, there's some steps we have to go through to make sure that it's restored back the way it needs to be, but it's also done in the correct manner and not done half, halfway. So, there's been some comments on Facebook about it. I'm like, oh, we know what's there. We don't know what's there. So, all right. Uh, at this time, we'll do mayor council comment. Any questions about that?
No.
Okay. At this time, I'll do some mayor council comments.
I'm just gonna ask you to hand that question.
Kim, you want me to start with you? You want me to go down? Last time I yelled, "Bell," you said, "Start with me." I don't know.
It's very nice. I hope it stays that way, because I got a class coming up this weekend, and I don't wanna be in a real.
It's supposed to be nice, supposed to be ninety on Sundays, is what they're saying, so.
Ninety is a little hot when you're chasing behind a motorcycle.
That's what it says, a little warm on Sunday. Ms., Ms. Owens?
Great showing on the Bourbon and Blades. Um, that event, that's, it's the sixth year, and for those who did not attend, you missed a great one. For those who don't know what it takes to put one on, you see everything behind, from chairs to plastic bags to garbage to whatever, to make sure the show is successful. And all the sponsors that we had, I mean, gee whiz, between the sponsors, the donors, the vendors, the food trucks, the beer tent, the whole nine yards, and then to unfold that and be done by somewhat midnight, and then to turn around and do it again. The concern that some of the folks had is that we're running out of space. So, I'm sure eventually, that is gonna be one of those questions of, where do we put it as it gets better? But thank everybody, the mayor and all that had something to do with, I think I saw all of you at one point in time. But, and thank you to the public that attended, and so the next thing will be the cultural festival, and I'm sure she'll tell you about that. But that's it, sir.
Thank you. Yes, move.
Thank you. Um, we'll start with this Saturday. This Saturday, the thirteenth, um, the Radcliffe Optimists Club is having their annual fishing derby. It is at Signature Health North Harden. That's on Rogersville Road, four to seven. It is free. There'll be fishing derby trophies for the youth. It's children up to age thirteen. Bring your own fishing poles, bring a chair or picnic blanket. Food will be served. And if you'd like more information, and I'm sure they would love some donations, if you wanna contribute to help with some of the prizes for the kids, uh, you can call Denise, two seven zero, three one two, five zero five seven, and the information is on the Radcliffe Optimists Club's page, uh, on Facebook. And as Ms. Owens said, the annual, um, cultural festival parade is Saturday, the twentieth. It is here at City Hall. The parade, uh, is the Radcliffe City Parade, and Ms. Ashley is in, is in, uh, charge of getting the participants for the parade. You can call her at the city. Um, the booths are pretty much in line. We will have some stage performances. We will have the different food booths, um, and some different, um, cultural performances and vendors. And that's four to nine, with the parade being at five at City Hall.
Did it? Good? Uh, Mr. Roger, nothing? Hold on. Sure? You wanna say one thing? Usually you always have something to say.
Well, I'm sorry I wasn't at the moment, but we have our St. Bridget picnic Saturday, and that was.
There was a lot going on Saturday.
There was a lot going on Saturday, and we were in charge of a booth, and so by the time we got done, it was nine-thirty tomorrow.
It's always.
So, I would've loved to have been there, but I was exhausted by the time we wrapped it up.
Mr. Brown?
No, sir. I went to defer to you, so we can hear about Bourbon Blades and our corporate partners and how, how great that was.
That was great.
I wanna hear from you about that.
Well, there's a, there's a special lady next to you that's probably wants to say a few words too, so I'm gonna.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Bell, do you have anything?
Well, I just went to say my condolences to the family of Ms. Sandra Broward. We lost her smiley face in the community. We, we lost a lady that has a special needs child, and she lived for that child only. And now that child is, uh, alone. We don't know if there are relatives. We don't know if there are people to take, but Robbie, Robbie and Sandra were two for one, and one for two. And they are asking for donations from the city and everybody to do the funeral and, uh, bills that they arouse of the loss, after the loss of Sandra. It was so sudden, and she, she's a remarkable, she was a remarkable person. I call her the, the smiley face.
Yeah, her, Robbie, there is an aunt, there's a sister, and Robbie's being, is staying with her right now.
Brother and a sister?
Yep, there's a sister, so Robbie's staying with her, and I believe they've posted her, um, obituary and the funeral times, visitations, which I believe is Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken. And they're gonna do the funeral and then the visitation, or the visitation and the funeral right after, memorial service.
Okay, okay. So, check the paper for the
Yep, yep.
Day and time, or it's already announced?
I think it's.
It's on Facebook.
Is it next Wednesday?
Yeah, it's on this one.
Sorry, I thought it was this one. I, I read it real quick, actually, before it came in here, so it's next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. And which funeral home?
I think it's Chisholm.
Uh, the funeral home is Chisholm, but
Chisholm?
The, uh, funeral and the visitation is gonna be at Crossroads Baptist Church out off Black Branch.
Okay. What is that?
It's in, uh, E-Town, well, Cecilia, like, Black Branch Road. It's like, um, industrial park. There's Blanche, it takes you back that way, yeah.
Okay. So it will be in the paper.
That's right, Black Branch, yeah. Yep.
That's all I had. And I would mention also the Bourbon and Blades. I didn't have Bourbon, but I had good music. It was great.
Yeah, it was good.
It was great. And, yeah, it was, I left around eight o'clock. The food was good. I was a VIP. I had a card. So, sometimes something sad happens, and then something happens that is happy, and we just have to move on and continue life. That's life.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
No, and I know everybody's already said it, but just real quick, wanna thank Ms. Russo, 'cause, I mean, it's, it's a lot of work that goes into coordinating all the people, the staff, the, everybody that goes on. Um, I also wanna thank Josh Lynn Bloom, our jailer. He sent all, you know, they usually have a crew that comes up that helps unload everything, his guys. Even the sound people and everything said those guys were spectacular. We, you know, they did a great job. I didn't get to see him that morning, uh, but I do wanna thank, uh, Big Josh and his team, uh, down there at the jail for coming out and volunteering, helping, helping those clear, uh, get the equipment and everything off. Uh, police and fire, they did a great job. Thank you all, um, for being there. Tim, thank you. Tim hauls all of our golf carts back and forth and makes sure they get there and, um, but we have a great time. Public Works, everybody, all of our staff. But I also wanna thank the Basham family, um, Josh, Jason, Lonnie, their team, and then, of course, Boundary Oak Distillery, Brent Gooden, Tanya, and all those guys over there. It's just, it's a really good operation. Jeff, I don't think we had any major issues. No, everything was good.
Yeah, it was.
Well, I'm not gonna say what a guy said about y'all on Facebook, but, uh, on the News Enterprise website, but we'll just leave it at that.
I did see.
Said y'all just dying to, he said it was a concert and a DWI party or something like that, but whatever else like that.
Waiting to pick somebody up.
And then, Chief, I don't think we had any issues with.
Two injuries.
Two in, oh, yeah, that's right, the guy slipped, yep. But I think he said he ain't leaving. He's gonna stay and watch the show, I think's what he said.
He didn't. He stayed right there.
So, no, it was a great time, great weather. Um, really couldn't ask for better weather.
Sunbelt bells.
Sunbelt Reynolds, they have spot, helping, uh, helping out with the, uh, we thank them, 'cause they gave us a, a lift, civil lift to, uh, get the spotlight up, 'cause the one we had wasn't gonna work. And so, uh, we appreciate them. Uh, parade, if you ha, if you can, uh, we still have people wanting to sign up, the parade, as I mentioned, next week, so please, please. Candy, we throw candy, we throw candy. Pete, we throw candy.
Can you imagine you throw it at?
We throw it at people as well. And so, um, it's just, it's a great time. Candy's a little bit more expensive, so I know people are gonna be a little tighter on maybe how much they throw this time, but we appreciate that. Um, I'm trying to think what else. Next week, we're gonna have, if anybody still wants to follow up, we're gonna have the police discussions on there. I think some of y'all had met with Chief, 'cause we postponed that vote. Any questions regarding that, just reach out to, uh, Chief Cross. Uh, we should have that. Chief, you should be good to move forward on your end. Um, Ashley, is there anything else we've got? We've got the derby, we got all that. She mentioned Ms. Downer. Anything else you can think of?